The City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona to be held June 7th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Let's have our clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember Henry?
Here.
Councilmember Hulse?
Here.
Councilmember Kurat?
Present.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Wildon?
Here.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Here.
Mayor Olinsky?
Here. Please stand to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noted for legal action. Councilmembers, do we have anything this evening to report? Yes, ma'am.
Our city manager, Ron Corbin, and Colonel Braxton?
Some more?
Pardon? Commander, sorry. Attended last week in Prescott, a dedication and a statue which was beautiful, and maybe that's not the right word, but it was very well done with all the officers that have fallen throughout the years and in the line of duty, and oddly enough, Youngtown was way up there, which I thought was kind of odd, and Yavapai County, I think, had the most guests, but we didn't have any, thank you. Hope it continues, it was well done.
Good, thank you. Go ahead.
I just want item, I attended the quarterly meeting of the Verde Valley Transportation Planning Organization, our senior engineer, James Bramble, also attended, gave an update on our Cottonwood projects, for those of you that don't know about the organization, it's a chance for all of ADOT, Yavapai County, and the local jurisdictions and other stakeholders to meet and discuss different transportation projects that they have going on, for example, Mr. Bramble updated on the Pima blowout wash update, Mingus, et cetera. I've been monitoring the Yavapai Patchination Transportation Grant-funded project, the line that will move through Cottonwood, Clarkdale, and over the mountain to Prescott, they're getting closer to actually kicking that off, and so that's a neat new transportation. Other than that, there are a lot of road construction projects, so just if you're traveling around the valley this summer, just always plan for some delays, but it's good, exciting improvements for our circulation and surfaces, so that's it.
Thank you. Any other council members? No? Mr. Corbin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, a couple this evening. Registration for the Vacation Fire School with the Cottonwood Fire Department is now open. Children ages nine to 12 will learn safety skills such as CPR, fire safety, water safety, and much more. For more information, please contact Jamie Housman at 928-634-2741. The City of Cottonwood will be hosting the annual spring cleanup at the Cottonwood Transfer Station, 1500 West Mingus Avenue, from Sunday, June 12th through Saturday, June 18th. The cleanup event will be open daily from 8:00 to 5:00 PM. The cleanup is open to all City of Cottonwood residents at no charge who provide proof of residency with their driver's license or utility bill. You can visit cottonwoodaz.gov to view the list of items that will be accepted. Registration for our Learn to Swim program is up and rolling, the first session started this week, and registration for the remaining three sessions will be ongoing all summer. Make sure to register early to secure your spot, you can register online by visiting cottonwoodaz.gov. For more information, please contact the rec center at 928-639-3200. And then don't forget, Old Town Music and the Market is happening every Wednesday through June from 5:00 PM until dark at the Old Town Activity Park. Be sure to follow Old Town Music and the Market on Facebook or visit oldtownmusicandthemarket.org for updates. And finally, the Mizzula, that's not right, children's, Mizzula, I can't talk today, I apologize. Children's Theater Program is this Saturday, June 11th, at the Cottonwood Community Clubhouse. This year's play will be Red Riding Hood, an original musical adaptation of this classical tale. Doors open at 2:30 for the 3:00 PM show and at 5:00 for the 5:30 show. Tickets are available at the door or online at cottonwoodaz.gov, Parks and Recreation. For more information, please contact the rec center at 639-3200. Thank you.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, let's move on then to call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion, however, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. Comments are limited to a three-minute time period. Just a reminder that we're going to make some changes to our call to the public, the way we do our call to the public here in Cottonwood. We discuss it as a council, we want to try to streamline call to the public, make sure that it remains at the front of the agenda, but try to keep the comments more relevant to things that are within our jurisdiction here in Cottonwood. So, I gave a poor example last time, I'll give another poor example this time. If you're wanting to complain about a pothole in Cottonwood, this would be the place to do it. If you're wanting to complain about a pothole on the 260 coming into Cottonwood that's in the county, we would try to do our best to direct you to your county representatives to make that complaint. Or if you want to complain about traffic on the I-17, same thing applies. So, it's just, again, an effort to make sure we keep things as relevant as possible to things that are within our power to control. So, there are forms in the back, they're yellow, and you can fill them out and get you up here to address the council. First up this evening is Ms. O'Daniel, and if we could have some assistance with the mic, I'd appreciate it.
Mayor Olinsky and city councilors, hospitals which admit and treat patients on Medicare and/or Medicaid, including our own Verde Valley Medical Center, receive incentive bonuses from the federal government for COVID diagnoses, government-approved treatments including kidney destroying remdesivir and death. Government sources reveal that on average, hospitals nationwide reap $171,000 per COVID patient, according to the government and courtesy of the taxpayers. Nineteen-year-old Grace Emily Shara died in a Wisconsin hospital on October 13, 2021, not from COVID, although she did have COVID, but from overdoses of three tranquilizing drugs, including morphine, the label of which warned against combining with the other two sedatives Grace had received. The morning of Grace's last day, her doctor commented on how well she was doing, but hospital staff strapped her down, inserted a feeding tube, and administered two sedatives. Her sister, seeing her vitals plummeting, had tried to get help from the nurses, but they refused to enter the room. Unknown to family members, her doctor had issued an illegal DNR order for her, so the nurses were, quote, "just following orders." A little over an hour later, after the morphine was administered, Grace died.
Ms. O'Daniel, I hate to interrupt you, but the subject matter you filled out says this is about the Verde Valley Medical Center? Did this occur at the Verde Valley Medical Center?
It did not, but it applies to our Verde Valley Medical Center because they, the Verde Valley Medical Center admits patients with, that are on Medicare and/or Medicaid, and so our Verde Valley Medical Center are under the same federal guidelines as all of the hospitals that do this in the nation. May I continue?
Please.
When Grace's mother came to Grace's hospital room after she had died, a nurse whispered to her, quote, "Me and several of the other nurses don't think Grace should have died today." The family's attorney believes the doctors took advantage of her situation, for you see, Grace was Down Syndrome. Therefore, according to the government, she was expendable, Webster's Dictionary definition meaning worth sacrificing for an objective. Since Grace was not given remdesivir or intubated, the hospital received only a $1,680 CMS payment.
Time's up, ma'am, thank you. Appreciate you being here.
You interrupted me.
Ms. O'Daniel, I appreciate you being here, but we are trying to keep things relevant to the City of Cottonwood. Thank you. Next up, we have Mrs. Gold, Ms. Gold?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members, I wish I were here to celebrate the successful voluntary compliance by Embry-Riddle to Cottonwood's new airport noise abatement plan that went into effect on May 16th. I wish I was able to report that Embry-Riddle's training flights have stopped flying above our homes before 8:00 AM weekdays and 9:00 AM on weekends. Sadly, I cannot. Perhaps in time, Embry-Riddle's leadership will have a change of heart and decide to voluntarily comply with the new plan, perhaps not, time will tell. For now, I want to express my sincere thanks to those on the city council who have given time and effort and continue to give time and effort to resolving the issue of aircraft noise above our homes. To Mr. Corbin, and especially Mr. Tripp, who's here, our airport manager, my deep thanks for all you have done so far in your efforts to promote noise abatement at Cottonwood Airport. To all of our city and county leaders, I urge continued efforts toward local and regional airport infrastructure improvements, especially for a touch-and-go airstrip away from the Cottonwood area. Steady growth in aircraft training activity is predicted to continue at least through 2025. Those of us most strongly impacted by flight training noise above our homes remain hugely in need of noise mitigation. We are relying on each of you to do what is needed in order to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gold. Is there anybody else in the audience tonight that would like to address the council? All right. Move on then to the approval of the minutes of the work session of May 10, 2022, and the regular meeting of May 17, 2022.
I'll move to approve those minutes.
Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor made the motion, and Councilmember Hulse seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved. We go on to unfinished business then, ordinance number 710 amending section 2.110.040.D of the municipal code relating to the attendance requirements for members of the city's Historic Preservation Commission, and this is the first reading.
Thank you, Mayor Olinsky, council. We brought this back, or to you, back in February, having a discussion about the attendance requirements for Historic Preservation Commission. Some of the wording that is in their bylaws is inconsistent with what is in the Planning Commission bylaws regarding the attendance requirements. So, removing the one word consecutive makes these bylaws consistent with each other. We've had this discussion with council, also with the Historic Preservation Commission and Planning Commission, and we all felt that taking that word out, having the consistency between the two commissions, and should there ever be a situation where we needed to have somebody that needed to be talked to about their attendance, we would deal with that on a case-by-case basis and in that event. But we're not changing any of the attendance requirements in this, other than three consecutive meetings as opposed to just three meetings on an annual basis.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Pageant? No? We talked about it at great length before, so this is just the first reading, so if there's nothing else, then we'll go ahead and bring it back for a vote at a later date and have our clerk read ordinance number 710 by title only.
Ordinance number 710, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, amending section 2.110.040.D of the municipal code relating to the attendance requirements for members of the city's Historic Preservation Commission. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. All right, next is interview of Planning and Zoning Commission applicant, is the applicant with us this evening?
We added a note, Mr. Mayor, we're asking that item to be tabled, she's not able to make it tonight.
All right, and I'll go ahead and motion to table this. I guess I don't need to move, I'm just going to table it, okay. It's tabled. All right, moving on, hopefully we'll get her back at the next regular meeting.
Possibly, sir.
Possibly, okay, great. All right, monthly financial report is up next from February 2022, any questions on that, council? No? Okay, good. All right, consent agenda, the following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen still requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. We've got 10 items this evening, so kind of a long list, I'll read through them, if there's an item that you'd like to have pulled, please indicate so, and that goes for the public as well. Item one is resolution number 3134, appointing Randy Stevens as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Item two, resolution number 3136, designating the chief fiscal officer for submitting the city's fiscal year 2023 annual expenditure limitation report to the Arizona Auditor General. Item three is resolution number 3137, adopting a fiscal year 2023 public safety personnel retirement system pension funding policy. Item four, resolution number 3138, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Verde Valley Fire District for shared public safety communications technician employee services. Item five, award approval of contract with the Poon Group for fiscal auditing services. Item six, request to transfer permission to keep bees at the Cottonwood Community Garden. Item seven, request for authorization to purchase approximately 11,000 square feet of real property located at the southeast corner of 18th Street and Mingus Avenue from Yavapai County for the purpose of constructing a new wastewater lift station. Item eight, approval of price increase for backup generators for the Upper Five and Yuma Well sites. Item nine, extension of professional services agreement with Kimley Horn and Associates for on-call airport planning and consultant services. And item 10, approval of cost increase for the Pima Street blowout wash bridge rehabilitation project. Is there an item that a council member or a member of the public would like to have pulled? All right, I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Kurat seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? It's approved, and let's have our clerk please read resolutions 3134, 3136, 3137, 3138 by title only, please.
Resolution number 3134, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Randy Stevens, a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and establishing her term of office. Resolution number 3136, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, designating the chief fiscal officer for officially submitting the fiscal year 2023 expenditure limitation report to the Arizona Auditor General. Resolution number 3137, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, adopting a fiscal year 2023 public safety personnel retirement system pension funding policy. And resolution number 3138, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Verde Valley Fire District for shared telecommunications employee services. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thanks. All right, new business is next, following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. First up is consideration and possible approval of minimum operating standards for commercial skydiving operations at the Cottonwood Municipal Airport. We have Mr. Tripp with us. Good evening.
Evening, Mayor, council. Oh, Mayor, council, in 2017, the city approved a basic set of minimum operating standards for several commercial operations at the airport. Skydiving while the current activity at the airport was not one that we could have done at that time. December of last year, the airport was approached by a potential skydiver wanting to start the services here. We've also had calls from some other companies, at least suppressing interest, or finding others still doing skydiving operations here. So, these minimum standards were put together to at least now give ourselves a basic set of minimum standards for any operator who wants to come here, and these have been developed based upon looking at other airports' minimum standards in other countries. We did talk to the one company doing jumps and donuts, they didn't do them, didn't have any real issues with the policies that we presented to you.
Okay. All right, we've got the standards in our packet, I'm sure we've looked them over, any concerns or questions, council?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask Mr. Tripp to clarify, oh, we currently don't have anybody considering starting here? The people that approached us have backed off for the time being?
Correct, they have decided to put these involved, since they're working on some east coast operations, so at this point, this is still getting us in place, whether this company comes back, or another future operator, and if nobody in the future decides to do it, at least we still have the policies ready to go.
Sure, okay. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
If someone does come forward to want to do this, does it come before council again or not? Or is it just automatically approved?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Wildon, it depends on what the approach is, the minimum operating standards provides a way for them to come in, if they provide the insurance and they meet all the requirements of the standards. Unless they're asking for a lease or an agreement of some kind, I don't know that they would come back to council. Like, most businesses that operate at the airport don't come before council unless there's an agreement with the, you know, with the city, like a lease or a business on our behalf or something like that, but normal operating practices. Mr. Tripp, unless you disagree, I can't think of why they would come back.
No. It depends, I think we've had certain things like the kill termist, which operating purposes, you know, at staff level, as Mr. Corbin mentioned, I think if they were going to do a ground lease or something requiring council approval, they would bring it back. If they were, say, subleasing with the EAA or another tenant, they would probably not have to come back, depending on what the contract requires, whether it's council approval, city manager approval, or simply my level.
My only concern would be where are they going to land, and is this going to be a heavy increase to traffic into our airport?
Any council, council, the, any proposed drop zone, they'd have to go through the design review process, and that's part of the minimum standard, saying that it has to go through an EPA risk analysis, and they have to have sufficient land, for example, there are setback distances from the runway where the company that wanted to do tandem jumping only rather than, say, learn to skydive here, their distances are smaller than, say, to learn to fly many greater distances, so whatever operator that wants to come on would still have to meet the basic minimum operating standards to operate on this airport, go through a lengthy review process. If they were proposing an operation that we could not accommodate due to the lack of space, then we would turn them down, and there would be no reason why.
Any other questions, council, concerns? No? Okay.
Motion?
Well, I just had a question, though, because if I understand Councilmember Wildon's question correctly, it was, would an operator come back before council? And the answer was, not necessarily, but the requirements that were being asked to approve do include a requirement of a lease. So, it's my understanding that that would necessarily require them to come back. So, it's in number E, or letter E, it says lease from the airport, the sufficient land to develop, operate, maintain, and dedicate a drop zone, and then also ensure that the, or there's discussion about, you know, the landing and the termination of the lease. So, it sounds as though we'll be involved at any, in every step of the way on this item and be able to review each applicant as it arose or the situation arose.
Yes, we would be taking a look, but they could also potentially do an off-airport drop zone, so these standards would say if somebody's operating, say, if your aircraft in the presence on the airport, potentially have a drop zone off the airport. A good example is the hangar lighters that operate up in this mountain, they have their bailout field on City Park, but they also have another bailout zone to the west of the airport on Forest Service land. So, again, this is just kind of the minimum standard to at least get the ball rolling, and then any specific business would have to take a look, everyone's beyond airport, they do something different. And if they're going to, say, lease land from a tenant, there's sufficient space that a tenant has, but they're going to land on a tenant's property that's already been approved by the city versus leasing from the city, again, we'll also take a look at what the individual operators are proposing. This also is trying to figure out if we have a drop zone that allows more than one operator, so if we had a multi-use open drop zone, and you have two companies, then we have to take a look at the lease agreement, because it wouldn't be leased to just one entity.
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Henry, if I can add, so just to be clear, not all leases come to council. So, a sublease from a lease that's already been approved by council gets approved at either Jeff's level or my level, so not all leases come back, and if their landing zone isn't on city property, they wouldn't have to have a lease with us necessarily. If they were leasing a place for their airplane, again, maybe, they come to council, maybe they don't, because if they're subletting from another user, then we wouldn't necessarily be involved.
And I understand that, then these skydiving operations, these, this should not require the operator, the language in the packet says, "A skydiving operator shall lease from the airport," so if we're not going to require that they lease from the airport, as we just heard, that language should say, demonstrate lease or legal right to use the remaining requirements of subparagraph E.
Councilman, I think this would be, they're going to lease airport property, again, if they want to do something off the airport, we would not be leasing them the drop zone, we would be doing this once. If they're leasing a hangar, which basically a tenant, you would not be involved, and they would not particularly come back to council. So, again, this is just trying to give a general operating procedure, if something comes to us, we would then still go through the full review process to see if there's anything that does need further action from council, to make sure that it's meeting our standards, again, these are just trying to get some general standards in place based upon previous operations, and if something else comes up that's not quite identified here, we then we may figure that back to council for your approval as part of the overall process.
And Mayor, can I ask our city attorney to clarify, because I'm clearly, where we have in the preamble that a skydiving operator shall, and we have these requirements, that's not what we're being told tonight, so are you able to clarify paragraph E where we are requiring that they lease from the airport?
I think your point's well taken about the way it was drafted, I think there's probably a 98% chance, depending upon just our experience, and it's limited with skydiving operations and our research about other jurisdictions, that there will be an interface with council. I think what Jeff and Ron are saying is, it's theoretically possible, and in which case, you're right, that we probably shouldn't make it an absolute requirement that they have a lease from the city in order to engage in an activity that we couldn't prevent, because we can't discriminate against aeronautical uses unless there's a safety reason for doing that. Jeff, is there anything I misstated or missed?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Henry, I mean, I see what you're saying there, maybe we need to remove the word "a lease from the airport" and just say, "lease sufficient land to develop," take out the word "airport."
Not even lease, but to me, just demonstrating the ability to use that property and whatever that is, if it's owned, leased, whatever the nomenclature is, but I don't feel comfortable, this takes it, this expands the discussion, it's not even just council control, but if we're having something on our books that is a requirement that we are not going to enforce, we can't enforce, we're not going to require, I don't see the point of passing that.
I think that's right, they shall have sufficient space, and I think the assumption is most skydiving operations that would fall under our minimum standards would be based at our airport. I guess it's theoretically possible, given that we're in a valley with at least one other airport, that it could be otherwise.
That sounds great, thank you, Steve and Ron. Thanks, Mayor, I apologize.
Yeah, no, that makes sense, so can we wordsmith that this evening then and still approve this, or does it need to come back?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Let's have Councilmember Henry wordsmith that, shall we?
I'd go ahead and move to approve the proposed skydiving operations with the revision to paragraph E that was discussed during the meeting.
So, it shall have sufficient space, but not needing to lease from the city specifically? Okay. Everyone clear on that? Good with that?
Second.
Okay, all right. So, Councilmember Henry made the motion, Councilmember Wildon seconded it, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurat?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Moving on, we've got ordinance number 713, amending section 304, design review of the city's zoning ordinance, and this is the first reading.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, Scott Ellis, Community Development Director. Ordinance 713 is an amendment to our design review standards specifically regarding exceptions to what has to go to the Planning Commission for design review. So, right now, there's a limited amount of things, criteria that have to be met to avoid that. Sorry. Sorry. We've recently had projects go to the Planning Commission that even the commission questioned, why are they here? It's because the criteria listed weren't met for administrative design review. So, we're looking to add a provision in there that lets the zoning administrator make that determination. If it cannot be seen from a collector street, arterial street, example is, we had one project off of Cherry back in the industrial, off of Sixth, which you can't see. We had it on the east side of Sixth, same thing, and then some of the hangars at the airport. So, this allows administrative design review of that, speeds up the process. Right now, if they have to go to the Planning Commission, it's at least 30, 45 days out by the time they go to code review. That's not going to change. We're still going to require the design review fee, but this, again, speeds up the entire process.
So, how then can we be assured that the development will still be in line with our community values, if you will, aesthetic values?
Mr. Mayor, council, we will make sure that it still adheres to anything that the commission would look at. They're still subject to all the same standards, development standards, height restrictions, landscaping, screening, lighting, parking, everything still applies. If there's ever a question, we'll coordinate with the P&amp;Z chair, just kind of get their idea, hey, do you think this is okay? Do we need to take it to you? Look at it in that way.
Okay.
So, the chair is the one that decides?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Wildin, the chair would not decide, per se, but we would consult with the chair just to kind of discuss it, with the ultimate decision being with the zoning administrator.
Questions, council? No questions?
No questions, but just a comment that this seems to be in line with the recent, not recent, but in recent years, council direction to try to streamline our development without removing the necessary oversight, because we will have administrative review and always in the exercise of good judgment. So, to me, it makes sense.
Okay. I see heads nodding, so that's a good sign. I think we can bring it back for a second reading, and it seems like, I would agree, I think it's, we've wanted to make businesses get in the business quicker, and this is, I think, one of those ways we can accomplish that without compromising our community aesthetics. So, let's bring it back.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's have our clerk please read ordinance number 713 by title only.
Ordinance number 713, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning ordinance by amending Section 304 Design Review. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, I would motion to pay the claims and adjustments.
Second.
Okay, Mayor, may the motion, Councilmember Carratt seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then up next is the annual review of the city clerk. This is executive session pursuant to Arizona revised statutes 38-431.03A1. The council may vote to convene in executive session to conduct its annual performance evaluation of the city clerk, subject to the clerk's right to compel the meeting, the council, to discuss this matter in open meeting. I believe you'd like to go into executive session?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. So, this is the part of the meeting where we invite everyone to leave, and we'll reconvene after we conduct our evaluation. It'll be a short reconvening, but otherwise, have a good night, and we'll see you next week.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, for clarification, we're asking everybody to leave this office, because the executive is going to happen in the chamber.
In the chambers, yep.
Yep.